Good evening and welcome to the July 6th, 2021 session of Bedford City Council for a regular meeting. And would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Asbury.
Here.
Saunders.
Here.
Coche.
Here.
Spinks.
Here.
Janutus.
Here.
Lou Hardy.
Here.
Mizek.
Here.
Uh, Council, you have the minutes of the special work session of April 26, 2021. Any corrections? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Janutus? Burke, call the roll, please.
Asbury.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Mizek.
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the work session of June 7th, 2021. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Mizek, second by Asbury? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Asbury.
Yes.
Saunders.
Abstain.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Mizek.
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the public hearing of June 7th, 2021. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Lou Hardy, second by Spinks? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Asbury.
Yes.
Saunders.
Abstain.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Mizek.
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of June 7th, 2021. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance, Mizek? And seconded by Asbury? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Asbury.
Yes.
Saunders.
Abstain.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Mizek.
Yes.
And now, uh, one of my biggest pleasures is swearing in a new officer. And, uh, it's always a good thing when we add some fresh, young blood to the departments and, uh, some new perspective. And this is especially rewarding because now we will have our first female police officer. So if you would. [laughing] [inaudible] 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 We'll give it a minute for them to clear out the hallway and, uh... [inaudible] 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 Okay. Soon as soon as it quiets down a little bit and then we'll move on here. We have no old business, so we'll get to reports. Um, before we do that and take the prerogative, then I'm gonna go first this time. Usually I'm at the end and, uh, everything's said. Uh, we had a great little Fourth of July parade, uh, on Saturday, on the third. Uh, we had a motorcade through town and I think we hit eighty-five, ninety percent of the streets in town, except for some of the dead ends where we couldn't turn around. Um, and it was nice, it was nice. It certainly wasn't the normal Fourth of July parade we have, uh, between here and Bedford Heights, um, but when Bedford Heights declined to have the parade again this year. So we did our little motorcade and it was good. Uh, we saw a lot of happy, smiling faces and threw out a bunch of candy and, uh, not only were the kids happy to get the candy, but I think the adults were more happy that we threw them candy too. Uh, so it was a great thing just to go through and a little display of our appreciation as council to our residents out there that we drove around town and tried to say hi to as many people as we could. Uh, so that was kind of a neat thing. Uh, the other thing I want to mention in is, uh, if you haven't done it yet, The Dream Walkers, I don't know if you've seen this, it's the immersive play that's going on right here in Bedford. Uh, it's an interactive play. You actually get to, uh, interact with the actors and ask questions and trying to figure out who done it. And it's just so well done and it's done in our city. This is, I think, the third installment of this, uh, Shadow of the Run series they're doing. And, uh, it's really pretty neat. And we are the only place between New York and Chicago that is doing this type of play called immersive theater, uh, which is a real, I think, honor for our town to have this, this type of Hollywood production right here in town and, and certified, that's certified actors that belong to Screen Actors Guild. I mean, some professional people doing these, uh, events. And, and I know we, uh, we went there to, last weekend and, and we had, we had a ball. And, uh, what was really neat is there was a lot of people there that I didn't recognize, which means people were coming from other places to come here to see this. And as we were leaving, uh, it ended up in Cernas, he's helped sponsor the event. And the last two people that finished the, uh, the play, the guy was from Koshakton and his date was from out of state and they came up here for that play. So it's just really, really a neat thing. And they are playing one more weekend, so you can go online to shadowoftherun.com and get all the information. Uh, it's just a really, really neat thing to have something like that right here in town. And, uh, and I hope they have some more productions. And the neat thing is one of the producers lives here in Bedford. That's, they were looking all around Cleveland where they wanted to do it and he says, "No, no, no, they'll come out to my town and do it, it's a pretty cool town." And they did and, and they loved it and, uh, we had a great time, so. I'm giving them that plug and please, if you can go see it, go see it. It's just something unique to do the, uh, that, that type of thing. And now that I got mine out of the way, we'll start with our city manager, Mike Malice.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple items, uh, get ahead because we're gonna mention some of them in the legislation this evening, um, but I wanted to mention that, um, we are, uh, as you've, those that have seen in the previous meetings, uh, Kyahoga County is committed to moving forward with Union Street this year, um, which is a good thing. We've been trying to get that project done for, or, um, actually since 2014. Um, one of the things, there was a small portion of the, of that project that was gonna come out of the city's, um, budget for, uh, to extend it all the way to go from Broadway to Broadway instead of just Broadway to Norfield. We wanted the entire street, um, but there also needed to be some substantial sewer repairs that were done, that needed to get done. So we were gonna be, um, investing about $320,000. Uh, the good news is last week we applied for, um, funding through Issue Two, which is state funding for, for large capital projects and we were, we were approved. So we are gonna get some, some funding, uh, for the city's portion of Union Street. And there'll be some legislation later on acknowledging that. Uh, but what that does is it frees up some, uh, additional money for some roads. And we're gonna be asking Council later tonight to, um, reallocate some of those funds to include a street that was originally bid as an alternate during the road program, um, and that was Nordham. Uh, we weren't sure if we'd have the money to do so, but our staff that really worked hard to get this funding through Issue Two, free up the money is gonna allow us to hopefully do that, um, if, if, um, if we're able to, to move forward with that legislation. So I, I wanted to compliment the staff, there was a lot of hard work that went into, uh, securing those dollars. Um, I also wanted to mention, uh, regarding another project that we've talked about for, for a few years, and that is, uh, our connector project that includes a bridge, reinstalling a bridge that would go over Viaduct, uh, the falls, and it would connect the pedestrian trail on Egbert Road, um, to Willis and then a pedestrian trail from Viaduct Park to the Commons. So in theory, people that are in town can take that path and you can go right into the metro parks. Metro parks, bikers and hikers that are coming down Egbert, they got a direct path right into town. Um, it's a, it's a substantial project. It's a, over a million dollars. We've been looking at a number of different grants to go after that. Um, one specific funding source is NOACA. Um, NOACA, it's very, uh, it is a long and complicated process, um, because in order to get, um, construction dollars, you first have to go through their planning phase. And, uh, you know, that, they gotta believe in the project, to be honest with you. They gotta believe that this is a viable project, um, that they're gonna get behind, uh, provide funding for the planning, and then you go through that process, you can then be eligible for the construction dollars. And we found out last week, our staff member that put a lot of hard work into it, uh, the city was awarded an eighty thousand dollar planning grant for that project. So we're gonna be starting that. Um, a lot of engineering, a lot of, um, surveying work that we need to get done, um, before we actually go for construction dollars. But it's a huge first step, um, to seeing that a reality. So I wanted to obviously compliment Jen in our Economic Development Department. Um, our Police Department, um, for those of you that, uh, that are not aware, City Council, uh, supported and included in this year's budget, uh, the purchase of body cameras and dash cams, uh, for all officers, all vehicles. Um, the body cameras have been, uh, we initiated those, um, about a month, month and a half ago. Um, and then last week they were installing all of the dash cams. Uh, so those are, uh, the department's implemented, implemented with all of that. Uh, I think it's good for, for the public, I think it's good for the department. Um, and thank you to Council for, uh, for approving that during the budget process. Uh, I wanna give a quick mention, um, couple weeks, July fourteenth is gonna be, uh, Bedford Parks and Recreation Department is gonna be putting together a summer concert series, um, down on the Commons on Wednesdays. There's gonna be two every month, uh, two in July, two in August, two in September. Um, first one is July fourteenth and we're having, uh, Risk Factor is the band that's gonna be down there. And there's also gonna be Smoke and Rock and Roll Food Truck, uh, also present. So if you're looking for a night to, to come listen to some music, uh, stop down there. Uh, we are also looking at implementing some movie nights throughout the summer as well, uh, most likely on a Friday evenings, but as, as details get ironed out, um, we'll share that. Please follow the Department of the City on social media and, and our, um, website for those updates. Also pool, uh, we, we were able to extend our pool hours, uh, as well as extending our, um, Learn to Swim program. If you're looking for that information, please visit our website, um, for the additional information. The city gave the Kyahoga County Land Bank the notice to proceed to tear down 180 West Grace. Uh, that was an abandoned property that the city, uh, worked to acquire at no cost and our intention obviously is to demolish that. So, um, that is being funded through a grant that we received and Kyahoga County is gonna tear that home down. And lastly, I just wanna touch on, and there'll be some legislation again later this evening, um, but for the last few months, we've had some, some significant issues with the railroads, specifically Norfolk Southern Railroads, um, stopping at the tracks. Um, we have been working tirelessly to try to get this resolved. Um, spoken to a number of different individuals through Norfolk Southern, dispatching centers in Atlanta, in Michigan, Trainmaster is a gentleman's title. Um, we're working through that. Unfortunately, it happened twice today. Um, we're aware of it, we know it's an issue. I just wanna stress that we are, we're doing everything we can to try to fix this and you'll see some legislation, uh, later this evening. Um, we had wished we were not looking, going that route, but it's necessary, uh, it's a concern, um, and I just want everyone to know that we're, we're taking the steps needed to hopefully resolve this. End of report.
Thank you. Law Director, John Montelum.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, uh, I really have no reply, I just wanna congratulate Savannah Selden and, uh, Sotera Williams to, to her nomination to the Planning Commission. And, uh, other than that, uh, nice to see everybody. Take care.
Oh, Mr. Hood, I didn't see him on the second page there, let's go down the first page.
Mr. Hood.
As well. And Mr. Trezak and Ms. Spates.
Yep.
Everybody, congratulations.
Thank you. Finance Director, Mr. Ambosi.
Uh, just to note this evening, we have Jennifer Holland with us today, our Assistant Finance Director. She's been working closely with me on the ARPA funding and what we're doing there to try to obtain our funds for future projects that are gonna be available pretty soon. A couple items, the, uh, you know, uh, Civil Service Commission, Nancy's here today, uh, did a great job in regards to putting together tests. Pretty quickly, we did different methods this time that seemed to work very well for us and, uh, thank them for all their efforts and time that we spent on that. Um, the Rotary Rip Burnoff is gonna happen, July twenty-third to July twenty-fifth, that weekend, we will have our event. We have all the signs starting to go up now, we have our banners going up, advertising going up all over. Uh, so please come join us and enjoy that, um, evening with us and support our Rotary, um, organization. Uh, we completed our audits recently with a couple of different firms, actually in working with the State Auditor's Office. We finished the audit, we finished also our federal single audit, uh, that had to be completed also. So all those funds that we received last year from federal dollars were audited as well as a regular audit of the city, so we had our auditors everywhere. Uh, and did very well, very great results, uh, Department did a fantastic job and Jennifer, great assistance in that regards too. Uh, that's all I have for this evening and I appreciate, uh, all the efforts of the department. We'll have more in tax coming up and, uh, enjoy the summer.
Thank you. Council, Mr. Asbury.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, again, I'd like to congratulate Officer Selden. Uh, I had the great opportunity to work as auxiliary with Bedford Police Department for the last three years and, uh, they're really a great group of officers and I know she's gonna fit in very well and I'm hoping she's happy in her new position. Congratulations. Uh, hopefully everybody had a safe and enjoyable Independence Day, everybody still got all your digits. Throw good there. Um, my arm is a little sore from throwing candy out the window. Three hours, this way trying to drive, but we had a good time and, uh, I think the kids really enjoyed it. Um, Ellenwood, Mike, um, I know we were hoping that it would be finished off this week, but it looks like rain the rest of the week, so maybe...
Yeah, the final course will probably, I mean, we're still hopeful, but if it's weather, it's probably be pushed out to next week.
Okay. So hopefully we get that finished up and be nice and smooth for us. Uh, just wanna announce some things that are going on downtown. Uh, we did have Bedford Downtown Alliance had our, uh, first Friday, last Friday, July 2nd, uh, big success. It was Party in the USA. Everything, of course, was red, white and blue themed, there were a lot of red, white and blue prizes given away, the nice baskets were given away. Um, Bedford Falls Cafe, uh, distributed sixty meals, so we had a really good time. Uh, the next one is Friday, August 6th, and the theme is Put Around Downtown. So we're gonna have a golf theme, we're gonna have some little things for the kids, little putting greens. Stop down and see us Friday, August 6th, six to eight. Along with the Bedford Rotary, um, event going on from the twenty-third to the twenty-fifth Rip Burnoff, uh, there will be on the twenty-fourth, Christmas in July. And we know Cernas has their big to-do every year with the phone coming off of the roof. Bedford Downtown Alliance will have some things going on also. So it's gonna be a busy weekend, uh, July twenty-third, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. Come on down and have some fun. Um, January seventeenth, I think we've got a couple things going on, on that day. Uh, first is the National Record Store Day, which we had back in June. Um, and what that is, is the record stores, they have the releases from the artists and they all drop on the same day. Um, Final Grove had a big turnout and he's expecting a, and actually bigger turnout for this one. Hopefully maybe one of the news crews might come down and, uh, show our city in a good light. Um, and also on the seventeenth, we're dedicating Sammy's Bench.
Yeah.
So I know it's been a long time coming, um, after Sammy passed away last year, Bedford Downtown Alliance with Heather Rhodes, uh, put together a GoFundMe and purchased a bench and a nice stand pedestal with a plaque and that's going to be dedicated on July seventeenth, Saturday morning at ten?
Ten AM.
Ten AM, so we're looking forward to that. Uh, that's it, end of report.
Uh, Jeff, you said January seventeenth.
I'm sorry, July seventeenth. For Sammy.
Different temperature. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Very good. Um, Mr. Saunders.
At first off, I wanna say the whole reason I was abstaining from all those minutes, uh, I wasn't here at the last meeting. I don't miss many meetings, but at the last minute, my son, my older son who's in the Navy was able to get leave at the same time his now wife, who's also in the Navy, got leave. And they got married out in Mount Vernon, Washington State. It was a last-minute thing where we got our flights and everybody flew out there, her family, my family. And ironically, the ship actually docked the day of the wedding, so a few of the people from the ship, because they were both on the same ship, Ralph Johnson, it's a destroyer, it's probably the meanest destroyer in the Navy right now. So it's one of those things where when you're in the military, it's last-minute everything. So I had to take off and go to that, so that's why I wasn't here the last time. So subsequently, I abstained from all of the minutes from that date. The only real thing that I have right now are two things, and that is, I don't know if Mike's aware of the fact, but on 4th of July, they were actually blowing fireworks off at Ellenwood. I would have thought that we wouldn't allow city property to do that, although the house right next door to Ellenwood was blowing off regular full-size commercial fireworks also. I want to thank the police department for handling some of the situations with the fireworks. It was kind of hectic on the 4th of July itself. I don't know where these people are buying commercial-grade fireworks, but there were quite a few. Ironically, on Nordham, which we're going to repave, happened to be one of the ones that had really big fireworks that you would see in a display shooting off. And you know how these houses are 50 feet apart from each other? There were sparks coming all the way on Logan, which is on my street, a full block away. So these people have to realize that it's dangerous blowing these off. That's why when we have, cities have displays and stuff, they are actually in areas that are remote enough so that it doesn't damage any surrounding properties or cause incidents. Now, I know the state legislature is looking at actually making commercial-grade fireworks legal, which sometimes you wonder what's going on in Columbus, but that would be a big mistake. So hopefully we're over the worst of the fireworks right now. I know of several veterans that were having a problem because they have PTSD and the fireworks weren't doing them any good, as well as a lot of people who have pets. I know my two dogs were buried under chairs during the whole 4th of July especially. So it doesn't do well for some people. There's a time and a place for them and the emphasis is on place, not in the middle of neighborhoods. So with that, my other issue is something that, if you remember a few years ago, I voted against because I thought exactly what's happening over there was going to happen. But the old convent on Broadway has turned into a hut apartment building. There's no manager there at all anymore. They're letting people in, they're 30, 40 years old, it's not an old age thing. It's low income, yes, but we have a situation over there that people who moved in thinking it was old age are planning on moving out because it has become exactly what I thought it might become, is a hut apartment building. So we need to look into the situation over there and find out exactly what's going on because with, there are no manager over there anymore either. The place is running amok. There's garbage in the hallways. One of the residents who I think they finally evicted this weekend was a hoarder and the place was filled with trash. It was spilling out into the hallways there too. So we have a situation over there that needs to be looked at and I would hope that somehow we get to look at that and correct that thing because that was supposed to be our gem old-age facility and it's turning out to be exactly what we didn't want, that was an apartment building basically for low income. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mrs. Spinks.
Welcome back, everybody. Glad to be back. I reminded Mr. Fleuharty to make sure he had pants on because we wore a shirt at some of the Zoom meetings. He had shorts on. And I had to put my shoes on tonight. Big congratulations to our new officer. That is quite an honor and it's very dear because I am the proud mother of an officer, not a female officer, but that's really great for our city. And like I said, the good thing about it was that she wasn't hired because she was a female, she was hired because she was very qualified. So that's always, the parade was awesome. I kind of, I hope we don't go back because I think it's so cool because we, I got to see parts, I've lived here 14 and a half years and been on council for eight, very involved in the city as soon as I moved here, but there was parts of our city that I had never seen. Me and Vic were talking about it and boy, did we have a beautiful city. There's places that I had never been and I was like mainly, you know, concentrated on the downtown area and Ward 1, but we have beautiful homes. Like I said, I hope I'm able to find these streets and go back. I'm pretty much with Mills on Wheels, I'm all over everywhere but Bedford. I'm in Bedford Heights, I'm in Walton Hills and Oakwood and everything else, so some of these homes I haven't seen. So that was fun and once again, I threw out my school supplies and little basketballs and stuff and the goodies for the seniors. I even knew this year was soup mix and boy, that was a big hit. And I didn't hit anybody with it. So that was good. The Bedford Historical Society, this year what we're doing due to COVID, we weren't able to have our strawberry festival. So what we, because all of our fundraisers have been just, we haven't had anything in almost two years now because of that. And so what we decided to do was we're going to combine some of the vendors which had paid for last year. So what we're going to do is some of the strawberry vendors, we'll have the food that's normally at the strawberry festival, I'll have that, and the artisans, the artists from, and the entertainment from the celebration, all at the weekend of Puka. So we're going to combine those two events, the September the 10th, 11th, and 12th, it's the second weekend like normally the celebration are. And this year, instead of having, of course, September, sometimes it can be warm, sometimes it can be cold, so instead of having, of course, there's not strawberries then. So what we're going to do is we're going to be having strudel, we're going to have a strudel tent in ice cream, so that's going to be one of our fundraiser and we'll have craft beers this year instead of the draft beer. So and we'll have artisan artisans, so it's exciting. And Jeff, if the Downtown Alliance would like to get involved with that, we'd love to have y'all to do that. So now on to business, Mike. We had talked about it before and I'm going to get you to kind of explain about it, me and Vic have been talking about the speeding. It's been, I'm like a broken record, I've been complaining about it, you know, for years and years. And of course, I see the majority of it living on Grand Boulevard, having a stop sign that I can count per day of people that don't stop at that stop sign. And of course, my concern is I don't want to wait for an accident to happen. But it's not just Grand Boulevard, it's Willard, it's everywhere, it's all over the city. It's everywhere, it's all our side streets, even the smaller Archer, and I mean, that's a curvy road, they go flying down there. And my concern is, like I said, one of our kids getting, you know, hit, dogs, anybody getting hit. And I had compared it one time saying, you know, well, Norfield, go down to Norfield, go by the casino, they're not going to get you. Really can't compare to that because that's a straight shot. Here, we've got all these side streets, so you can't, you know, compare us to that. And I had talked to Mike and I said, well, you know, when you go into Walton Hills, you know not to speed through there because they have the cameras and they tick it. So I'm going to let Mike, we've talked about it, I'm going to let Mike touch on that, on why we...
Well, a couple of things. One, obviously it's something that, you know, we take seriously, police department takes seriously. We, Chief and I have talked about some other options that may be able to curb some of these things, especially on the cut-through streets. And hopefully I'll have some more information on what some other options may be in the coming meetings. You know, the one thing with it's difficult that I often say it's tough to compare to like Norfield is, you know, Norfield's got, I mean, and again, I'm not trying to compare, but I am, I mean, it's really one main street through that town. I mean, we have, we don't have one main street, we have Broadway, Norfield, Columbus, Rockside. I mean, it's much easier when you have one main drag to patrol that one main drag. Obviously, you have to patrol side streets as well. I'm not entirely versed on all the legal and the ramifications of the speed cameras, but I do know some communities, you know, it was a big lawsuit with the state of Ohio, those communities that put up the cameras, they won a lawsuit. State of Ohio at one point came back and said, okay, you have the cameras, those cameras generate dollars, we're going to cut back your local government funding because you've taken that route. Obviously, it's something, if that is indeed how it's still in place, again, I don't know all the ramifications of those suits that went on between the communities in Columbus. And yes, they would be a deterrent, but I would in no way, shape, or form advise Counsel to make a decision that could ultimately result in us getting funding cut from the state of Ohio. You know, at one point, our local government funding, I think at our peak, and I know Frank would correct me if I get this wrong, we might have been around $700,000, $800,000,000 what we used to get. That was cut down to mid 200, 280 maybe?
It's as low as that, we're about the 300.
Yeah, at the lowest point, it was, you're right Frank. At the lowest, it was about 270, 280. It went up a little bit when Governor Dewine took office. And again, I don't know all of the ramifications with speed cameras in those communities, but I know there was discussions that if you have those cameras and you're generating income in that way, we're going to cut back funding in this way. I would never advise Counsel to do anything that could jeopardize that funding. I mean, we utilize that funding, it's very important to programs for our community. Not saying that those don't work as far as deterrent, obviously, I'm sure they do. I mean, I got a ticket once from a speed camera. It stunk. But, but we, you know, we know, especially on some of the long cut-through streets, we know it's a challenge and we're going to look at some ways that we can hopefully try to curb that.
Okay. Thank you for that short discussion. Mike, another thing too, and again, a broken record, we put signs up on both ends of Grand, the nearest center and the nearest Broadway and for no big trucks. Well, I counted four today come through filled up with trucks, with cars. So they're, and it's no way that they cannot see these signs. So it's just, it's, I feel like it's very disrespectful to our city for them to do that. They've got to see them. And I mean, it's just, it's, you know, our roads are, from the last, the flash flood we had, there's a regular large, rather large hole down by the creek. So they're not, at least they're not speeding because they're so big, but there's, you know, the transporters are still coming through, so that's a problem. I'll talk to you about that. And of course, we've got several streets that I turned into that has holes. Grand, that hole, Grandcroft, Tudor, Willard, there's a bunch, we discussed, the Dead Tree on Tudor in front of 100. And let's see, what else? Oh, a big thank you before I get to some sad stuff. A big thank you to CERNAS Cafe for what all they do for our city. And of course, everybody knows that a big love of mine and one of my favorite things to do is volunteer. And I was away for a little while due to my husband's sickness, was Mills on Wheels. And Brett Holikos has been so gracious to donate soup. And one Friday, I got to deliver and you would have thought you were giving those seniors a million dollars and it was a bonus meal. They had their meal for the weekend, but that was a, or we deliver Monday through Friday. And so sometimes on the weekends, it can get kind of tired of them not having something. So we're so lucky to have, and I heard it's really good soup too. So I just want to publicly thank him. I thanked him in person when I went to the Immersion Theater, that was really neat, but his volunteers and everybody at Mills on Wheels really appreciates that. Now for the sad news. Their dear friend and my neighbor, ever since I've been living there, Bob's been there for about 20 years, my neighbor, Tony Camera, who was a, worked at the high school, so she's a security guard, goes try to get through this without crying, but don't hold me to it. And just a big condolences to her husband, Doug. She beat, four years ago, she beat stage four pancreatic cancer, but last year, cancer came back around her lungs and her heart. I never saw somebody that was so positive and just a fighter. She has one son, Zach, and my heart just goes out to Zach, who's an only child, and he, they grew up here in Bedford. Like I said, she worked high school, but she at least got to see her granddaughter, she has an eight-month-old granddaughter. And just what a wonderful neighbor. And through all of this, everybody knows, my husband was diagnosed with cancer, came back after eight years. So they became what they called the Grand Boulevard Cancer Funnies. And while he was in the hospital, here she was going through all this, she would text me and she'd say, let me know when you get home, how's Bob doing? And here she is going through the chemo and going through all this and she was still concerned about somebody else. So I would try to, you know, take something over or she, I'd hear a peck on the back door and it'd be her bringing soup over for Bob or for me and always checking in, let me know when you get home and we'll watch for you out the window. And just, it's a great loss. We share a backyard, but we just shared so much more than that. And his mother, Ms. Thomas, Joan Thomas, I know her before I lived here, she was our nurse at Shaker Heights where I worked. And it's just a big empty spot right now and just talking to her husband today, I spent time with her mother-in-law today and it's just, me and Doug were talking about, it's just being a caretaker is the hardest job you'll ever be given. And I'm so thankful for my friends and my constituents that have called and sent cards and checked and everything and I haven't missed a beat on doing my war check, even when my husband was in the hospital. So my dear friends, and there's a couple of them sitting in this room that I don't know what I've done without you. And I love you guys and thank you to my residents and every part.
Thank you. Mr. Janutus.
Thank you. I don't know how to follow that exactly, see.
Just start crying, you'll be okay.
I don't want to start crying, but I will say this, that it's nothing but, there's nothing better than having good neighbors. That makes all the difference in the world, doggone it. And I want to welcome my new neighbor, Austin Reed here for the first meeting and I know it won't be his last because a lot of times we imagine, well, how can we revert residents to be citizens? There's a lot of volunteering opportunities, but I think in the case of Austin here, he's already, has a good sense of citizenship, I could tell already, so in large part demonstrated by him being here, so welcome. And also, he moved into the birthplace of someone very famous who's sitting here today, just a few seats away.
My old house, where I grew up.
The old house, yeah, yeah.
Grandfather built it.
Ate a few peanut butter and jelly sandwiches in the house, right? Because, you know, as kids, we just were everywhere and our parents had no idea where we were and that was perfectly fine back then. Mike mentioned the connector project and if anyone's not aware of what that is, Little Bridge Over Tinker's Crack, it's just going to be awesome. And I tell you, it's going to be, in the future, that's going to be a legacy for this administration and it's going to be really a great thing, looking forward to that. I missed the parade around the neighborhood, but I did get to go in some guy's backyard the other day and he was showing me something and I had never been there and it was just wonderful to be where, you know, see, you know, places in Bedford, because Bedford's fast, it's huge, it's 3,500 acres or something, so it's not, you don't get an occasion to see it all. It is really beautiful. And I suppose, from what you're telling me, you probably went through War II because you said you saw some really beautiful areas, so it must have been War II.
Some of it was.
I loved War II, of course, I won the race there. I wasn't able to be at the parade because I had the occasion to be in Philadelphia this weekend and I was, I had business reasons for being there and I was just on the side street and I looked at kind of a worn little old house, townhouse, and there was a sign that said, this is the house that Thomas Jefferson wrote the Declaration of Independence. And I thought, wow, that is so cool. And I think it's neat that Bedford has a really connection to history too, but it really dawned on me and yeah, the fireworks this year were wild. I've never heard so many fireworks in my life, my God, everyone was just going crazy with the fireworks, but it was really something. And unfortunately, it was not what we all wanted to hear late at night, but it was really happening, it was really, it was really spectacle. But it really gave me a chance to reflect on our freedoms and our constitution. We had the swear and in ceremony, we asked that the officer uphold the U.S. Constitution. Each meeting, we recite the Pledge of Allegiance and we, at the end, we say it with liberty and justice for all and I think it would, for all of us, to reflect a little bit about our freedoms and the weight of our responsibility in terms of great notions of freedom such as the words of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And I think that those are the types of things that should dictate our decision-making, even in our humble, small municipal community of Bedford. End of report, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fleuharty.
You're right, one last, everything's been said already, or almost last, Paul is last tonight. Piggyback off what Sandy was talking about, Toni, Toni, I worked with Toni at the high school when she first started and the whole family, I actually coached her son, Zach, in seventh grade football at Heskett. So I was pretty, and her father-in-law is Bob Thomas, who was a teacher many years at Moody at high school, for anybody that's been in the Bedford school system. So that's the family. And she was a gym, so she'll be missed. She got me started.
I'm sorry.
Let's see, what was I going to say? Egbert Road Bridge apron tour to it is done now, Mike? It looked like it was done, it looks good.
Yeah, they got to do some markings and things like that. I couldn't prepare that.
And now what we got to do is, of course, get Union Street, that's next, hopefully. And also, I want to congratulate Savannah, she's a pioneer here in the city for being the first woman. When I worked at Bedford Heights and was a correctional officer in 95, they had three female officers. That was a while ago, so that shows you how many years it's been since we broke that barrier here and congratulations to her. And also, Mike, I don't, you know, they came out and collected my garbage in my neighborhood today. There's going to be a lot of people putting out garbage tonight, thinking they're a day late. They weren't a day late. So what, who do we call for what's going to happen? I know I'm going to get phone calls.
We'll pull it in. Normally what we do is anytime there's a delay, we put stuff out there that there isn't a delay, but there was no delay. We do those delays. You know, I don't think they're going to come back out for a second pass. Probably have to pull the trash in. I could look into it in the morning and check that, but probably have to pull that.
Because since Monday was, a lot of people celebrated as a day off, which it was for a lot of people, they just, I think, took for granted. I mean, I even did it myself, but I see them coming down the street, so I got out right away. But not everybody was home to do that.
I, I can check.
I just, it just was, I, I guarantee you, tomorrow's gonna be a ma- bad day for that. Um, let's see here, what else did I have? I guess that's it. End of report.
Thank you. This is Mizek.
Welcome, everybody. I am like, thank you, everybody, and this is, it's, um, Sandy's a tough act to follow, because, like myself, it's tough in my heart. To do something, what she did, what she said for this lady, I remember her from the cafeteria, um, young woman. I want to say congratulations to the new lady officer for the Bedford Police Department. A long time coming, well-deserved. She aced that test and acceptance on her merits, and the, the good job she's going to show us that she's gonna do. Congratulations to future board members and the other people that are here tonight. Glad we're all back, even though there's not a lot of us, we're good. I went up and down my ward almost every day as much as we could. Wanted to say thank you for Deborah and Belle. I believe, not complete yet with, uh, writing off on that, because the curbs are still a little bit on the rough side. Back to my attention. On the other, well, they, they passed a few things up there, yes, was booked into, and I appreciate that. Um, about three weeks ago, we're watching the game, and this lair of a siren looked like in front of my house. And I'm thinking, and it honked its horn, and usually the guys, when they come down, will toot their horn on their way out, to say that they're in my area. But my neighbor on Shawnee died of five, um, at a garage fire. But I want to personally say thank you to every department that was there for mutual aid, making sure that there was no tragedy, other than the result of the house not being occupied for a long time to come yet, and doing such a great job. Um, it was really an experience to see fire trucks and ladder trucks coming through the backs of our streets, just come to somebody's aid. You know what, these guys, ladies, put their life on the line, and a beautiful job of keeping everybody safe, and that fire contained. And, um, that little fire on Broadway Sunday afternoon, but it wasn't a she said, but it was a he said, that it was burned, I saw it when it happened. They did quite a good job on that response, too. Um, we will be having a lot, a lot of activities, as everybody said. I did want to say that the trains still are holding the people up, because I was waiting for delivery today, and the first thing out of the driver's mouth was, "What's with the trains in your town?" And I says, "We're lucky you were only stuck for a half hour." If it had been here a couple of weeks ago, it was long. But, um, we're working on it, and I hope we do the right thing to, uh, make it a little bit safer for our safety vehicles to get through, too, and then train to block in the tracks, because they've had quite a few close calls. And, um, people don't have patience, and if they realize that we do have a good city, learn to practice a little patience, it'll all clear up, and we can get. But I want to wish everybody a healthy year this year. Come on out, we're here, come on out and see your neighbors, and you know what, I'm glad we're back. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Uh, before we get into new business, I need to have a motion to amend the agenda to include Resolution Number twenty-five sixty-seven dash twenty-one, or county to proceed with the resurfacing, resurfacing of Union Street. Can I have a motion by Janutus, second by Spinks? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
And another good thing about being back together is our law director gets to read these, and I don't have to do it. Ordinance Number ninety-eight eighty-four dash twenty-one.
Amending Ordinance Number ninety-eight eighty-one dash twenty-one, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Allied Door Systems LLC and declaring an emergency.
Again, I have a motion for suspension. Asbury, second by Saunders. Uh, call a roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Um, Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. This is, uh, we had actually passed, uh, same ordinance, uh, last year. This was for improvements to, uh, we did improvements out here to the Municipal Center in a, uh, separate ordinance for the touchless entry, uh, all new door systems. This piece was for, uh, si- the same, but all new doors, glass and everything at the Ellenwood Center. Um, at the time, because we were replacing the glass, everything was on a roughly three month delay back order. So we had passed this. End of the year happened, we closed out all of our POs, all of those items. Obviously, it's back, we're doing the work. This is merely to circle back and pass this to reflect the year that we're, uh, paying and doing that work. Same price, same company, all of that is the same. Thank you.
Clerk, call a roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Ordinance Number ninety-eight eighty-five dash twenty-one.
Amending Ordinance Number ninety-four ninety-four dash seventeen, Designating Hun- Huntington Bank, U.S. Bank, PNC Bank, and First National Bank for the active funds of, of the city, and Huntington Bank, U.S. Bank, PNC Bank, and First National Bank for the interim funds and declaring an emergency, declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension, by Spinks, second by Janutus. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Asbury, second by Mizek. Uh, Spinks?
Yes, uh, every five years, the Ohio Vice Code, Chapter one thirty-five, requires the city with its investments and its, uh, contracts with each of the banking institutions to make sure that they follow the Ohio Vice Code, follow our requirements of collateral pledge in the banking system. And, uh, what these contracts do is put them on notice to, uh, do such. So I ask council to approve this this evening. These entities are offering their, uh, contracts to us, and also, we've been utilizing their services for, uh, the last five years. The last time we did this was two thousand sixteen. These contracts will run from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-six. So I ask council to pass that this evening.
Clerk, call a roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Ordinance Number ninety-eight eighty-six dash twenty-one. Amending Ordinance Number ninety-eight twenty-seven dash twenty, making additional appropriations for current expenditures of the city during the year two thousand twenty-one and declaring an emergency. Motion for suspension by Mizek, second by Asbury. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Spinks, second by Janutus. Uh, Spinks?
As usual, we're going to update our ordinances and our appropriation. Uh, as you know, we have a lot of grants going on, we have a lot of activity going on in the city this year. Uh, we did get the police cameras, we talked about that earlier, so we're gonna be appropriating another fifty-seven thousand for the first year of getting the equipment and so forth. We have, uh, economic development, uh, grants that we gave out regarding businesses and the school board, uh, paying them in regards to, uh, increased jobs and, uh, taxes that were collected on that in our agreements with them. We also have this evening fire pension, we had a lot of overtime there, we're gonna be transferring money to the pension fund so that we can, uh, pay those costs, as well as we had some drug law enforcement confiscations, uh, with our drug, uh, with our own officers, and, uh, we have that for thirty-three thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars. We have other grants with the, uh, police and fire, I won't go through all of them, bulletproof vests, food bank donations, uh, we even have a vaccination grant that we applied for through the recreation department. Uh, we have some extra increased refuse fees that we're dealing with in our contracts. And, uh, we talked about this evening, the Ellenwood Doors, which is included in this, and, uh, includes our ordinance. So I ask council again to pass this this evening. These are with, all in line with the way we're doing our projects and our expenses that we appropriate as we go.
Thank you. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Ordinance Number ninety-eight eighty-seven dash twenty-one. Authorizing the city manager to accept the proposal of J.D. Striping and Service Incorporated for long-line striping of streets in the city and declaring an emergency. A motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Asbury. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Uh, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, uh, we received two quotes for our long-line striping throughout town. Uh, the second quote came in at twenty-five thousand three hundred and five dollars. Uh, J.D. Striping came in just under that, it's our recommendation. Uh, we move forward with J.D. Striping, um, and we pass this as we can get started as soon as possible.
And they're the ones that have done this, that passed for us?
Correct.
Clerk, call a roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Ordinance Number ninety-eight eighty-eight dash twenty-one.
Do we need a motion to amend the amount in the sex of Section Two, or did we just do?
Uh, that was corrected.
Okay, good, good, uh, good. I didn't get the copy. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Evandra Brothers Construction, Inc., concerning the two thousand twenty-one road improvement program, and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension, by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Call a roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Saunders, second by Asbury. Dan, can I make a quick comment? Yeah? Your questions? Saunders?
I just want to say that we're gonna make one of our oldest residents in the town, who's ninety-nine and a half, that lives on Nordham, a very happy man, because he's been at every one of our public hearings that we've had to get this street done for years. So, he should be very pleased if we take this action tonight.
Yeah. You can mention his name, too.
Oh, Tom Menard.
Yeah. It'll be a hundred years old, so.
In Jan- in January.
Get this thing done for him. Um, I get my third? And Mike?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. This is, uh, a street that I had referenced during the reports. Uh, we were able to, with securing the funding for Union, it freed up dollars, uh, to, uh, amend our original contract with Evandra Brothers to, uh, include the alternate bid amount, which was for Nordham.
Thank you. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Ordinance Number ninety-eight eighty-nine dash twenty-one. Amending Section five fifty-three point zero one of our ordinances in the city, uh, and declaring an emergency. Motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Mizek. Uh, clerk, call a roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Uh, Mike?
Uh, yes, uh, this is, uh, legislation in regards to, um, the parking at the tracks, uh, to address the railroads. Um, we're establishing, um, obviously, a fine, uh, which would be a, a misdemeanor of the first degree with a thousand-dollar penalty, uh, as well as an additional, um, civil fee of one thousand dollars per violation for the rail line. The first one would be for the conductor. There is, um, our law director researched this with the, uh, Ohio Vice Code. Um, we also have to allow for a thirty-day grace period upon passage. So we will be sending this, uh, legislation certified to the rail line, uh, informing them of the potential charges, um, that they would be incurring for each time they park at the tracks.
And that thousand dollars is the maximum allowable.
Thank you. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Resolution Number twenty-five sixty-seven dash twenty-one. Requesting the county to proceed with the resurfacing of Union Road, uh, northbound Broadway Road to southbound, southbound Broad- Broadway Road, in the city of Bedford, resolving to pay one hundred percent of the cost for the construction, uh, construction supervision of the sanitary and storm sewer repairs, traffic sign updates, multi-use path, and associated work within the city of Bedford. Motion for suspension, Asbury, second by Saunders. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Uh, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, um, the first piece of legislation that we passed a few months ago regarding Union, did not reflect, uh, the sewer work, being that we received this money, sorry, that we received the money from issue two, and we now want to move forward and do sewer repairs. This basically is informing the, uh, Calhoun County that we will incur the hundred percent of those sewer repairs, um, work as part of the Union Street overall part, project.
Clerk, call a roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Page. Oh, yes, sir. Should we get a motion to approve that the, or deny the Planning Commission's decision to accept a conditional use approval to Asia Love, uh, to use the existing tenant space located at six-three-three Broadway Avenue to provide makeup and skincare services to clients Wednesday through Saturday, ten a.m. to six p.m.? The Planning Commission approved that, uh, that use.
And I remind you, a yes vote means you agree with the Planning Commission's decision, a no vote, you disagree with their decision to approve the, uh, conditional use. Clerk? Sorry? And I have a motion for suspension by Asbury, second by Mizek. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Motion for third and final?
By Spinks? It's all approved already, Mayor.
Oh, it is? Well, by that, yeah, okay. All we need is, uh...
They voted to approve it.
Okay.
The, I want to do these appointments, so you want me to just read them, and then if you want to swear them in after, you could do, go, instead of getting up and going each time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do all, oh, yeah.
I'll do the motions.
Read them all, and then we'll, uh, everybody up.
Okay, can we get a motion, can someone make a motion to appoint Sotero Williams
Can someone make a motion to appoint Sotiria Williams to the Planning Commission for the four-year term?
Four-year term.
Yes, for the four-year term.
By Spinks, second by Lou Hardy.
Take a, double majority?
Majority. Call a roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Nudis?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizaq?
Yes.
Motion passes. So can we get a motion to appoint Ryan Hood to the board? Ryan, I'm sorry. We got a little general thing going on right here. Mr. Hood to the Board of Zoning and Zoning Appeals for the, for a three-year term, or the three-year term?
Four-year.
Four-year. Have a motion to accept it by Saunders, second by Asbury. Call a roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Nudis?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizaq?
Yes.
Motion passes. That is a four-year term. Can we get a motion to reappoint Lynette Spates to the Board of Zoning Appeals for, for the four-year term?
Motion by Mizaq, second by Asbury. And call a roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Nudis?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizaq?
Yes.
And lastly, can we get a motion to reappoint Mr. Trezak to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a three-year term?
Motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Lou Hardy. Call a roll.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Nudis?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizaq?
Yes.
Ms. Williams, could I ask you to come forward?
Any day, thank you. By a go-kart. I don't know. Can you hear these swearing in skin? I hope you can.
I state my name.
I, Sotiria Williams.
Dusally swear.
Dusally swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Charter and Laws of the City of Bedford, Ohio.
The Charter and Laws of the City of Bedford, Ohio.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Honestly.
And honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the position of member of Planning Commission, the City of Bedford.
Position of the Planning Commission of the City of Bedford. So help me God.
But your chairman of the board is sitting in the back there in the black t-shirt. So that's who you'll be working with. Helen Briggs and you guys can chat after. But again, we appreciate citizens stepping forward to fill in these positions. And it's kind of a selfish thing, otherwise we'd be needing seven days a week to do all this stuff. And we rely on citizens to come in. And as you saw with the Planning Commission and getting the ordinance done, we thank you ahead of time for doing it and agreeing to volunteer type. Please, your word. Mr. Hood? Same deal. I state my name.
I, Ryan Hood.
Dusally swear.
Dusally swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and Laws of the City of Bedford.
And the Charter and Laws of the City of Bedford.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
Partially.
Just discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the position of member of Board of Zoning Appeals.
Of the position of member of Zoning Appeals.
For the City of Bedford, Ohio.
For the City of Bedford, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And again, say the same thing, that we do appreciate the board. We have board members sitting here, various boards do a lot of great work for us. And we look forward to having you there. And after we're done here, we'll get you to sign off on these. Yeah, what is interesting to me is I was sitting here looking at the oath you take, it's the exact same oath that the police officer did. Wow, think about the meaning that goes behind what you're doing. And it's important that you guys do these kind of things and the deliberations you get into. I think that's very powerful. And again, we appreciate you guys for stepping forward.
Thank you so much.
We're forward to seeing you. Okay, then, we finally get to hearing of citizens. If anybody has anything to say, please come forward, state your name, your address, and your comment.
Evening. My name is Robert Belkovic, 154 Falls Street, Bedford, Ohio. Excuse my voice.
If you could pull that microphone down. That's good.
I just wanted to touch on what you guys already did, Sandy did, they did over here with the speeding. I live up what they call the hill, Falls Street, John Street, Best Street. Mr. Lou Hardy lives in the same area. It's the Indy 500 up there. Stop signs, they don't believe in. They've been stuck in my yard four times, they live on the curve. I mean, it's, somebody's going to get hurt up there. The other day, we had a party on the 27th, it was Sunday, I believe. People parking on the, if you're going up the street, they were parked on the left-hand side. Now, we have called and asked the police department about various things. We're always in our neighborhood, this, that, and whatever. And the pictures I have on my phone, police presence is not up there. If it is, they go up Union, across Forbes, and that, and go down Norfield. Falls Street, zero. I think I see three today. Then they argue with me, I can't see them. Sorry, I do. I'm in a catbird seat, I can see all the way to Ford, where I'm at. I have a good view, you can ask Vic. I'm not, I'm not here just to blow smoke. And they say, why don't you call on these people that were parked on the street? If you're always in our neighborhood, why should I have to call? They started parking at 5:00 in the evening. My last picture was at 10:38. They were still parked there, I had the pictures on my phone. The last car that was in line was there that morning. Didn't even have a ticket on it. The guy come from around the corner, got in his truck, and he left. No police presence. I'm getting tired of getting smoked. I want some action before somebody gets hurt. We got, we got Dargity up there running Forbes Road. We have that new automotive shop by the Cottons that runs up Norfield and around and come down Falls Street because there's no stop signs. They had to put it down through there. I mean, it's ridiculous. Somebody's going to get hurt or killed, and I don't want to see that. I have grandkids, too. I, I don't like being told that they're there and they're not. I'm not here complaining just that they're not in the area. You can sit there and say they are. I disagree. Sorry.
Appreciate your comments, and I know the city manager's already written it down to talk to the.
I will, I will be more than happy to come in and have a meeting with somebody and show them what I have. So they do believe me.
Oh, I think they believe you. And I'm not making excuses, but as somebody stated earlier, this is just happening all over town.
It is, it is. I'm not saying.
And people in general are not taking responsibility for themselves.
No, if you go out of Bedford, you go to Norfield, you go to Walton Hills, you go to Oakwood, you go anywhere, you're not going to do that. I'm sorry. You're going to, you're going to do the speed limit or less, because you know you're going to get nailed. I myself have done it, Norfield Road 35, hell, I'm going 50/50 back. I know nothing's going to happen. I mean, I'll, I'm not going to lie. You just don't, you just don't get it in Bedford.
Yeah.
I, I don't want to see anybody get hurt.
Oh, neither do we.
Like I said, I've had four cars in my front yard, because I was right by Justin, he come right down Falls Street, right in my front yard.
Yeah.
So it's, it's up to you guys to do the best you can, but.
Yeah.
Somebody, somebody has to do something.
We, we will pass the word along, that's.
Somebody, now, we complained about this years ago. And I mean, I don't see anything getting done. I don't been complaining about it many a times.
I spoke to councilman Lou Hardy, I know you spoke to, I think it was Lieutenant Kellerman.
Oh, that didn't, that just didn't go right. I apologize for that.
Well, I, no, no, I am familiar with it, and he shared some of the data with me. I, I know that, and I don't think he's. Obviously, there's, there's speeding, we know there's.
Yeah, well, like I said, we're.
I, I don't want to not, I'm not, we know that happens, we know. I said it at the beginning, we're looking at the things that we can do. And I know you may not want to hear it, but I, I do want to make a point, you know, there was, up until last Friday, over 10 days, I think we issued it, it was either, I'd have to check my report, so don't quote me on it, it was either 34 or 44 night parking tickets. I think five of them were on Falls Street. So they have issued some tickets.
Well, like I, like I said.
I'm not saying they, they, they may not, I'm not saying they got all of them.
No.
But they are, we're trying to address some of those issues. Now, I don't know, as far as an overnight parking, I don't know, legally parked, obviously, that's the wrong side of the road, but, and I tell this to people often, we do do, if someone calls in and says, listen, I'm having some friends over, and I have permission for overnight parking.
Or you get your driveway worked on or something, can I park on the street?
Yeah, I had someone call me and said, this is ridiculous, they've been parked on the street for two days. Well, you're getting your driveway redone. Or another one had two relatives who are out of town. So they don't see that, and I'm not saying not, not on Falls Street, this was in another area of town. The neighbor doesn't see that, and was like, well, how dare the PD not ticket them, it was two days. They got someone in from Wyoming, and they asked for permission, and we grab them, we try to work with, and I, and I know, you know, there's some issues that, you know, the speeding, we have to do, we have to work to curtail that. I, I'm not disagreeing on that.
You've only got so many people out there in, in, doing this job. You can't be everywhere at once, I realize that. I'm not condoning you for, you know, you got to be here, no, that, it don't work like that. But at least once in an hour, come up the street, something. Have these guys get a zone where at 8:00 at night, they better be heading up that area. 9:30 at night, be heading up that area so somebody can see them. That's all we ask. We realize there's 10,000 things going on between, besides our little stinky street there.
Well, all of our streets are important. I think in our, in our offices, they know that.
I know, but like I said, there's some of the other things going on. They can't be everywhere at once.
Right, and that's the challenge.